Notice of this reading was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times and by posting at the Borough of Highlands Municipal Building and filing with Borough Clerk on September 13, 2024. Items listed on the agenda are subject to change. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now do roll call. Councilmember Sabantes.
Councilmember Chalak.
Here.
Councilwoman Melnick.
Council President Ochowski.
Here.
Mayor Bula.
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have our attorneys with us, Vito Gagliari and Carrie Wright. You all know our clerk, Nancy Tran. And away we go. Vito, would you like to start us out?
Sure. The way we go is a Jackie Dinsley reference, although, given the new Dings, I felt like George Jefferson did the truth.
It's on. It was on. Now you just turned it off.
So, good evening, everybody. There really has been so much going on in the ongoing efforts to bring before the voters of Highlands, Atlantic Highlands, and Seabright the option of having Seabright join Henry Hudson Regional that we appreciate very much the mayor and council for having Carrie and I down here because we wanted to bring you up to speed. So, I'm going to go over the history, really, of what's gone on for the past year or so. Even those of you who have followed it closely, I suspect, will be unaware of some of the things I'm going to share with you. I have as a caveat that everything that I'm saying could be upended by the appellate division. We're arguing tomorrow over the commissioner's decision to allow Seabright the standing to petition for authorization for a petition to join Henry Hudson. Spoiler alert: we are not going to lose that appeal, but the court will take several months before it rules on that. So, I'm going to go backwards for about a year and take you up through, literally, tomorrow morning at 9:30. So, you will recall this historic effort by the three governing bodies of Seabright, Highlands, and Atlantic Highlands to bring the issue of creating a K-12 school district for the three communities before the voters. And I'm underscoring what the nature of the effort truly is since the municipal governments and the leadership role that they've played have not been trying to decide what happens. You are going to decide what happens. Municipal government has been fighting, and the people that are against this are simply against the idea of letting the people choose how their tax dollars are spent and how their children are educated. It's remarkable, really. And for the folks in Seabright, of course, as Oceanport and Shore Regional resist this, they are using, in part, your tax money to prevent your taxpayers from deciding how their money is spent and where their children are educated. It's really just remarkable. But I appreciate the opportunity to work with this. We see leaders in different towns joined for such a noble purpose, which is letting the people decide. So, there was a point in time when the then-three school boards, Highlands Board of Education, Atlantic Highlands Board of Education, Henry Hudson Regional, and the three municipalities were jointly petitioning the Commissioner of Education for authorization to submit this issue for a vote. The issue was to create a regional school district, and the municipal governing bodies had a meeting to decide what they thought would be a fair tax allocation for the people to consider. They didn't approve a tax allocation. They approved a methodology that provided for a substantial amount of saving, hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, every year, for the folks in all three towns, and they were looking for the Commissioner of Education to authorize that being submitted to the voters. Shore Regional and Oceanport, the communities, the school districts which currently educate the children of Seabright, have filed numerous challenges along the way. I'm not going to go over every one. Every one of them has failed so far. But those court actions and the approach taken by the Department of Education toward the first-ever use of the statute which would permit this type of vote to occur led the school boards to be frustrated, and so last summer, without advance notice, they filed an amended petition leaving out the municipalities and leaving out Seabright, saying that while the Seabright stuff is being sorted out, we shouldn't be prevented from having a vote. And they asked for the commissioner to approve a vote just to create a school district for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands while the Seabright stuff sorted itself out. We didn't oppose that, but we filed papers with the Commissioner of Education seeking to make clear that even though the Seabright option was left out of the board's amended petition, that we still wanted that option considered. In September, the Commissioner of Education ruled that that vote, the September of last year now, right, could go forward, and it did, and you all know that it passed. And they ruled that once that K-12 district was authorized by the voters, Seabright and the Boards of Education were free to file a joint petition seeking to have a second referendum so that Seabright could join that regional district. I want to underscore something very important for you that is not as confusing as most of the things I'm going to talk about. This process was spearheaded by Seabright and Highlands, and they hired independent experts who did a report saying that virtually all the tax savings that would be enjoyed by the communities could come only if Seabright was part of the school district. There were educational benefits as the enrollment drops at Henry Hudson to adding the Seabright children, and there were substantial financial benefits. Atlantic Highlands wanted to do its own study, which came to the same conclusion. The school boards wanted to do their own study, which came to the same conclusion. So, for all of the differing viewpoints and assertions, the Boards of Education and Atlantic Highlands said, "We want to get our own assessment," and they did, and their own assessment made the same two points, that virtually all of the savings would come if Seabright was part of the regional and that there were educational benefits to adding the children of Seabright. So, there is no dispute on those two critical points. So, it was our view that filing an amended petition with the Board of Education, updating some of the analysis we'd already done, would not be a challenge. So, we had the study done, and Carrie spearheaded that work with the experts, and we shared a draft of that study with the Boards of Education because the commissioner recommended a joint petition. Only after following up several times did we get an email from the attorney for the Boards of Education on April 29, 2024. The email reads, in part, as follows: "I'm sorry to inform you that our client does not wish to file jointly at this point in time for a number of reasons. One, things are very hectic right now as the task of getting the new all-purpose regional school district up and running for July 1 are quite demanding, and the prospect of having to add an additional series of tasks as early as the fall is problematic. Number two, the draft feasibility study does not deal with the all-purpose district. Number three, the existing litigation with Oceanport and Shore Regional is not yet resolved, and the commissioner has yet to rule concerning Seabright's ability to withdraw from its present relationships. And four, the board has not discussed or agreed to a new tax levy appropriation formula." Unfortunately, every one of those statements is false, and I'm going to go over them for you. First, things are very hectic right now as the task of getting a new purpose, all-purpose regional district up and running is quite demanding. As you know, those three school districts were run by the same set of administrators. So, and the law answers what happens with things like your collective bargaining agreement. All of the property is transferred to one regional school district. No one has more experience doing this than Ms. Wright and I, and that process is actually fairly straightforward, particularly when all three school districts are run by the same set of administrators. That's not always the case. And it is unclear, since it was our, it was our set of consultants doing the analysis, how that would pose any additional challenges for the school leadership. Number two, the draft feasibility study does not deal with the all-purpose district. In that September 23 letter from the Department of Education stating, "Here's what you need to do to proceed," they set forth, is it seven?
Seven. It's labeled eight, but...
Seven questions that needed to be answered by a supplemental study. The study did exactly that. So, what the study did or didn't answer is irrelevant. It's not someone's opinion as to what should be in the study. The Department of Education said, "We need this additional information to consider the opportunity for Seabright to be part of a referendum for the public to vote on," and we gave them exactly that. Number three, "The existing litigation with Oceanport and Shore Regional is not resolved, and the commissioner is yet to rule concerning Seabright's ability to withdraw from its present relationships." That's what the commissioner ruled on in September. That's what's on appeal now. That's what we're arguing tomorrow morning. So, the commissioner, at the time this was written to me, had ruled eight months earlier that Seabright had the standing to pursue a referendum for its citizens to be part of Henry Hudson Regional District. And the litigation with Oceanport and Shore Regional being resolved, I have never seen a Nat treated like a Tianusaurus Rex like I have with this, okay? They filed an application with the commissioner. They lost. They neither sought nor received a stay, meaning there was no impediment to proceeding. And the Department of Education, when it told Seabright to proceed, made no mention of any concern of any litigation with Oceanport and Shore Regional. And I think I mentioned, without being disrespectful, they have lost every time. So, they provided no legal or practical impediment to our moving forward, and I don't see that as a valid excuse. And then the last, "The board has not discussed nor agreed to a new tax appropriation formula." Okay. That's the last one. Let me say it again. The leadership of the three towns did not agree to a tax appropriation formula. The leadership of the three towns agreed on a formula for the voters to consider. So, neither the board nor any mayor or council has the power to agree to a formula. They have the power to agree to something that seems fair to them for their voters to consider. That's all that was done, and that was done about two years ago. So, with all due respect to how busy the folks at the Board of Education must be, the idea that they have not had the opportunity to look at this in two years is, I'll say, unfortunate. But what's available for them to consider is not whether they want to agree to that formula. There's nothing to agree to, except something that is perceived by the leadership of the communities to be fair enough for the voters to consider. So, in any event, we were disappointed to receive this email and not convinced as to the rationale. Let me mention a few other things and then talk about, I'll defer to Carrie to talk about what it is we have done despite the board's unwillingness to participate at this In May of 2024, a month after this, we were in the process of preparing a motion to dismiss from this appeal the three Boards of Education and Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. The issue on appeal by Oceanport and Shore Regional is whether the Borough of Seabright has the standing to pursue a petition to authorize a referendum since Seabright does not have a Board of Education and is part of the Oceanport District and is a constituent of Shore Regional District. So, there was no relief being sought from the Boards of Education. As you heard, the stress and expense of the litigation, I don't think there's been much of either, but the stress and the expense of litigation was troublesome for the Boards of Education. There's no reason for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands to be a part of it. So, we were preparing a motion to dismiss the appeal as to all parties except Seabright. We were advised, as that was being done, that the Boards of Education and the Oceanport Board of Education and Shore Regional, so Henry Hudson, Atlantic Highlands, Highlands Boards of Education, Shore Regional, and Oceanport, were entering into a settlement agreement. The settlement agreement provided essentially as follows, that the boards would be dropped from a litigation, a litigation that seeks no relief from the boards, by the way, but the boards would be dropped from the litigation in exchange for agreeing with Oceanport and Shore Regional that they would not participate in any effort to have the voters vote on Seabright joining them until the commissioner has ruled on a petition that it's possible. So, this is so circular, I will not be surprised if you're having a hard time with this. But here's what they did. So, the Commissioner of Education has said...
You should define the "they." You're naming a lot of people.
Well...
It's all straight in your head, and it's not straight in everyone's head.
Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not, you don't want to hear the names I'm going to use, but, so, the, I'm going to call them the tri-districts, okay? So, that eliminates one of the pronouns. So, the tri-districts agreed with Oceanport and Shore Regional that they would not be a part of any effort to have Seabright join them until the commissioner ruled on a petition that it was possible. But I told you that in September 2023, the commissioner said that what the commissioner wanted to consider was a joint petition, Seabright and the three Boards of Education. So, how possibly could the Boards of Education agree not to be part of any effort to have Shore Regional, Seabright join, when Seabright needs to be part of a petition with the boards in order to join? I think that's called the Gordian knot. Now, I'm, I have a simple public education, so I'm using a phrase that probably has an interesting origin that I don't understand. But what it means is, the Boards of Education created for Seabright a conundrum that seemed insurmountable. "We won't be part of a petition until you get your petition granted, but the petition has to be part of a Board of Education and Seabright join initiative." So, the tri-districts entered into this settlement agreement, which at the time seemed odd to us because, A, they were settling a case that wasn't seeking relief against them, and B, we thought we were going to just file this motion, and when they'd have been let out of the case, they would have had to agree to anything.
By the way, just to be clear, we had discussions with their, with the tri-district's attorney about filing this motion. So, before they entered into those settlement discussions, they knew that this motion to dismiss them from the litigation was coming because we were preparing that in consultation with the tri-district's attorneys.
So, those, the tri-district Boards of Education, in one of their last, I don't think it was their last act, their last act, I think, was giving Dr. Beam's a five-year contract, but their next to the last act was to approve this settlement. And that's the basis for the litigation that the council president, in her capacity as both a citizen and the council president, is challenging. So, we think the way they entered into the settlement was defective, not pertinent for the purposes of this discussion. So, I will tell you that we went ahead and filed that motion anyway, and we won. Highlands and Atlantic Highlands were let out of the litigation. What that tells you is the Boards of Education could have gotten out of the litigation exactly the same way, without agreeing to any deal with Oceanport and Shore Regional. And I think in the context of this litigation challenging what they did, the discovery process is going to make very interesting what discussions were had and what promises were made that would allow these Boards of Education with elected representatives from your communities to enter into such an odd settlement agreement, one that, again, doesn't seem to have been necessary at all. But what it seemed to do, what it attempted to do, was to create an insurmountable obstacle so that there could never be placed before the voters, the opportunity for Seabright to be part of the tri-district regional, because the boards wouldn't be part of any such petition, and the commissioner said that the commissioner expected a joint petition. So, now I will give you Ms. Carrie Wright, who will describe for you what we are doing to surmount this allegedly insurmountable obstacle created by your elected officials for reasons that will not be clear yet, but they will be eventually.
Thanks, Vito. So, the next step that we took was to file that joint, well, sole petition, joint, actually, though, because it's between Seabright and Highlands. So, we went ahead and we filed a petition with the supplemental feasibility study that answers all the questions that the commissioner needs. And the relief that we sought in that petition was to grant the relief contingent upon Seabright joining Henry Hudson. So, what the commissioner doesn't want to do is, the commissioner is not going to approve Seabright to simply withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional without knowing exactly where Seabright is going to go. So, we have requested that the commissioner approve contingently Seabright to withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional so that it can go to Henry Hudson. Ultimately, Henry Hudson will need to make a determination on a referendum. Did she want to say something?
Go ahead.
Oh, you moved off. You moved forward in your seat. I thought you were going to say something.
I wouldn't interrupt you.
Okay. So, that's the, that's the petition. As you may recall, just recently, Seabright passed another resolution regarding that petition because the commissioner wanted to make absolutely certain that Seabright had passed a resolution, which we are certain that they already passed. But anyway, Commissioner's Office says, "Jump through this other tiny little hoop." We jumped through that tiny little hoop so that we can bring this issue before the voters as soon as possible. So, to the extent that anyone had a question about why Seabright passed that resolution again, that was because the Commissioner's Office wanted to make absolutely certain that the petition that we recently filed was authorized by the municipal governing body.
You know, if you go back to read any of the media reports or even the things that the tri-district board posted online when it was campaigning for the referendum, leaders there said that they wanted Seabright to be a part of it, they just didn't want Seabright to delay things. Again, we may learn more about what's really going on there, but what we're looking to do, if we get this petition granted, is it would be an order from the commissioner that Seabright is authorized to have its vote to join the Henry Hudson Regional School District, contingent on that regional school district passing a referendum saying that it's ready, willing, and able to take the Seabright children. So, some cooperation with the Board of Education is going to be necessary. That makes sense, right? The commissioner is not going to have the people vote on whether or not children can join a school district that hasn't committed to taking them. But we have eliminated any concern that may or may not exist by the Board of Education that they're going to be involved in litigation, because when the commissioner rules on our petition, if the commissioner rules in our favor, which we certainly expect, and Shore Regional and Oceanport want to challenge that, which they will, the Boards of Education wouldn't be part of that litigation because they weren't part of the petition, right? So, we have eliminated the possibility that they said they were concerned about, which is getting involved in litigation, but they'll still need to pass a resolution before the referendum is held. Again, if we were working as we thought we would be with the Boards of Education, these different maneuvers wouldn't be necessary. We're trying to honor the law naturally, but we're also trying to respect what it is the Boards of Education are doing. A collaborative, cooperative effort with the Boards of Education would be much better, particularly if they wanted to follow the recommendation, not of our consultants, but theirs. The financial relief available is available if Seabright is part of the school district. The improved educational outcomes, since none of the children have moved just because they have one school district, you want to have more children so you can run more programs, have more honors classes, all the things that comes from a larger school population, you'd want Seabright to be a part of it. And I will add some compounding factors. A few weeks ago, the tri-district boards, now just one board, filed suit against the Commissioner of Education. They filed suit against the Commissioner of Education alleging two things. First, that their grant application that they filed should have had the Commissioner, the Commissioner's Office, pay for the referendum. That seemed to be the case, but there was something about their grant application that led the Department of Education to say, "We're not paying for the referendum. That's only worth $18,000." A bigger issue, according to their own petition, this is not anything we're saying, this is what they have said in filing the petition, is they seem to think that the way they formed, the Department of Education seems to think that the way they formed the district does not entitle them to the additional state aid they thought they were going to be getting for consolidating, and they're saying that they're being short-changed by $334,000. This isn't a publicly filed petition. I don't know that they discussed this at any of their meetings, but it's available. So, what that means is, in addition to the benefits that we've been describing, that their own consultants describe about the tax relief available to the citizens if Seabright is part of the district, they now have, between those two things, we'll add them together, about $350,000 that they're in the hole that they didn't anticipate, right? They didn't anticipate having to eat the cost of the referendum, and they anticipated, by their own petition, $334,000 in additional state aid. So, doing the math, I think that comes to $352,000. I'm rounding it to $350,000 because it's easier, but that's a pretty significant number for a school district of that size, right? $350,000. So, in our view, it makes Seabright joining the district even more significant. But what we think isn't the issue with these elected officials and kind folks think is not the issue. The issue is, with these additional financial challenges for that school district, why wouldn't you let the public vote on this? I don't have an answer for you, but it's a good question three months ago. It's a better question now, right? For $350,000 reasons, it's a better question now. So, in any event, if the commissioner grants the petition that is right described, we are hopeful that we will see some renewed cooperation from the Board of Education. And there's many ways they can throw monkey wrench at this, right? Well, now, we're going to look at the tax allocation formula that the mayors agreed to two years ago, and we'll, you know, wrestle with that for a while, what have you. Again, we have done this in so many different communities where the Boards of Education and the municipal governing bodies are collaborating. In some cases, the mayor and council aren't simply taking the lead, they're shouldering the financial burden entirely for a petition that's going to the commissioner and ultimately leading to a vote of the public. So, I am hopeful that we will see, as I say, some renewed cooperation here since the current circumstances have allowed us to proceed without the Boards of Education being involved in litigation and proceed at a time when the Boards of Education clearly have an increased financial need to seek the benefits of adding Seabright, the very benefits that all of the experts, including theirs, told them were in the community's best interests. So, with that, Mayor, I'll yield the floor to the...
Yes. Thank you. Go, go ahead.
Do you want us to go over the non-binding referendum?
Well, that's what I was going to say. The reason why we're here is the non-binding referendum, because, as you've heard, this is a very much detail. I'll sum it up in the way, from my own notes, we have been, many, I shouldn't say "we," many mayors and council members, and especially school board members, have been working on this idea since December of 2018. So, we're nearly six years in. I don't know the numbers for any other town, but we've spent over $175,000 on Vito and Carrie's expertise. This question is, do we proceed? We are trying to take a financial responsibility. How many more years are we going to go after this? How much more money are we going to continue to throw at this problem that nobody seems to want to make this happen or have a creative solution to making it happen? And making it happen, by the way, is Seabright coming into our school system. So, that's why we put this question on the ballot for a presidential election because it's, the amount of people who voted in Highlands for regionalization was 670. There are 30, over 3,800 registered voters in Highlands, and for only 670 to have made that decision, it's really tragic. But that's what happens when you have an election in September and there's nothing else on the ballot. So, we didn't want to hide this from anybody. The question's very clear. We're going to weigh the education, you have to weigh the finances on top of it, everybody's time, money, efforts, all of your time that you've come to. How many more of these meetings have we had? And we want to be respectful of everybody involved, especially the people. So, we don't, this vote is not going to bring Seabright in. This vote is for you guys to ask, answer a simple question: Do we continue to fight the fight? And even though it's a non-binding question, I mean, if it's resoundly a no, which I doubt that's going to happen, because why would you say no to lifting your tax burden, you know, we'll have to have that discussion then. But I think it's fair to put... But I think it's fair to put this out there. It's important. It's something that will, hopefully, if it goes through at some point in time, it would be very beneficial for all three of our towns and very beneficial for our kids. So I'm not seeing a downside, but I'm an optimist.
Yeah, I don't know how widely it was reported here, but Oceanport and Shore Regional sought to get a Superior Court judge to enjoin your having that non-binding referendum.
Which is American for they were trying to stop you from voting. They were trying to disenfranchise your vote, which is crazy.
And they were spending educational dollars to do it, including dollars from Seabright. It was a remarkable initiative. So we argued that two weeks ago it was unsuccessful, as all of their legal applications have been, I may have mentioned that already. So that is, you know, in terms of the cost of this, everything done to get in the way of this, as the mayor points out, is simply to get in the way of letting the people vote on the issue. They're not trying to stop the mayor and council from bringing Seabright into the regional district, because they don't have that power. The only power they have is to get the issue before the voters, and the idea that Shore Regional and Oceanport would spend tax dollars to try to stop it is unfortunate, I'll say to be kind, but it was unsuccessful. So that effort is over. The effort to argue that Seabright does not have the standing, doesn't have a school district, it's only a municipality, that argument, as I said, is going for the appellate tomorrow. I expect that to meet the same theme.
The only thing I'll add is, but to the extent that there are folks in the audience who live in Seabright, you'll see the same non-binding referendum on the Seabright ballot as well, asking that same question of the voters in Seabright that the voters in the Highlands are going to look at on the November 5th ballot.
And just to be clear, I did send that same question over to Atlantic Highlands and asked for them to put it on their ballot as well, and that was rejected. Do either of you have anything you would like to add?
No, I totally agree.
Okay. You're good?
Good.
Okay. We're going to take some questions.
Individuals wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the presiding officer and shall give their name, address, and the group if any to represent. Although the council encourages public participation and reserves the right, we wish presiding officer to terminate remarks to and/or by any individual not in keeping with the conduct of a proper and efficient meeting. If any individual refuses to conduct themselves in a proper manner, they will be removed from the council, from the meeting. The council will not, during the public portion of this meeting, discuss matters involving employment, appointments, termination of employment, negotiations, terms and conditions of employment, evaluation of the performance of, promotion, or dissonance of any specific or prospective or current employee. There's a three-minute time limit to your comments.
No takers, I'm shut. Okay.
Don Kruger, Wincenic Drive, Highlands, New Jersey. And I am running for my seat on the Board of Education. I have been on the Board of Education here in Highlands, but now the Henry Hudson Regional, pre-K through 12, for the last three years, and I'm doing one year just to get the regionalization through. But I want to say, just speaking for myself, not for anybody else on the board, I think it's wise to bring Seabright into Highlands, there's no question about that. But I think there's a misunderstanding of why the Board has done what it's done. And if I can go back, I don't know if I'm going to exceed three minutes, but I'd like to give the Boards a few of those. And you'll see that it's not that different from where you're standing right now. When we filed the petition with Seabright back, when was it, 2022? I don't even remember when we did that offhand. When we did that, nothing happened. We waited for the Commissioner of Education to do something, and this was just a deputy Commissioner of Education, and immediately Seabright and --
Shore Regional.
Shore Regional and Oceanport started a suit, and nothing happened. And we said, well, nothing's going to happen, this is going to go through litigation forever and ever and ever. And meanwhile, we really wanted to regionalize. So what we said is, let's do our own petition to get the three of us into one region, put in a petition for that, and hopefully that'll get approved, we'll get a referendum, we'll get that done. Okay, we did that, and we got that done. And now we said, we would welcome Seabright when the Department of Education gives the permission to do that. And we've said, you know, if you look at the settlement that we had, we said, once, we're just waiting for the Department of Education to allow Oceanport and Shore Regional to pull out, Seabright students to pull out of Oceanport and Shore Regional. Once they do that, we don't have a problem with that. Then we could submit a joint petition and get a referendum and see what happens. Now, we want more information, it's probably the same information that the Department of Education is asking from you. We'd like to get an accurate census of how many students are coming in there, how many special education students are there. We'd like to also have some input about what the funding formula is going to be like. But aside from that, I don't see any major problem. It's just a question of, we're not going to do anything until, and maybe this will happen tomorrow afternoon, the Department of Education says, okay, we give you student permission to pull out of Shore Regional and Oceanport. It's as simple as that.
So I know you're represented by council, so I want to be respectful of that in your capacity.
I'm just talking on my own.
No, I understand that, but I still want to be respectful of it. All I'll say is, thank you, in the sense that you're saying, I need, you know, we would need some information, and you identified what it is you would need, number of students, number of class selections, et cetera. We've never even been asked that. In other words, if the Boards of Education said, we're not ready to get on board yet because we could use some additional information, we would at least feel that the process is moving forward. You know, the mayor talked about Atlantic Highlands not submitting the question to the public as a non-binding referendum. The mayor, in the same communication, said, that's because we know our citizens would be in favor of it. So even though they're not doing this, Atlantic Highlands has been communicative in terms of what it wants. That is, we would want to be a part of this when it comes up for a vote. I can't say the same for the Boards of Education. So if there were a finite set of questions or even concerns about the funding formula, we would love, whether it's with our consultants or with our clients or both, to be given those questions and to answer them, because right now, since this no thank you email was sent in April, we've had no communication on any issue which the Boards of Education is concerned, and that's --
We don't want to do anything until the Department of Education says students can be pulled out. We don't want to do anything. We promised that to Shore Regional and Oceanport in the settlement. Once we do that, I mean, if it happens tomorrow, we'll go full steam ahead. We'll have our attorney contact you, I'm sure Donna will talk with you, and we'll move full steam ahead on this. Again, speaking for myself.
Understood.
But I've spoken to the other eight members on the Board. Not one member has said, we hate Seabright, we don't want any of those kids coming for our school. The funding formula issues are important, and knowing who they are, do we have a lot of special needs students, so we have to be able to budget for that, and so we have to keep that into account. There's some discussions about the way it's being funded, based on the number of students, which can be variable each year versus using adjusted valuation, and that's an issue. You know, you look at the economics of a school, it's all fixed costs and very little variable cost, and so if you don't get the money to cover those fixed costs, you can be in a lot of trouble, so we want to make sure we are comfortable that we'll have those fixed costs covered. Those are issues, again, I'm speaking for myself, those are issues that, you know, we have to attend to, but I think we can come to compromise, again, speaking for myself. Now, I'm only going for a one-year term, so I may never see this happen. I'm really concerned with the regionalization issues, with the lawsuit, for example, that we're doing against the state to get the funding money. You know, we really, really deserve that funding money. I was talking to Vin Copal yesterday about getting that funding money.
You need to be closer to the microphone.
I was talking about Vin Copal getting that money, helping us get that money from the state, because we think there's a real misunderstanding there. And the regionalization is a lot of work. You know, when this started, the state had no idea what to do. They hadn't seen this in so long, they didn't know what to do. And so we had a problem, they had no infrastructure set up to deal with that. And that's where Dr. Beams has been running into a lot of trouble and spending a lot of time. It's not on some of these other things. Also, I was on the teacher negotiating committee, we had to take three teachers' contracts and negotiate it into one. And I know that Continental Airlines and United Airlines have taken decades to get this flight attendance to go into one contract. So we did a lot of hard work, took a lot of time, but we got it done. We did get it done. But there's just a lot of little pieces that you don't think about. I mean, you're taking three separate school districts, we had 25 school board members, put it into nine school board members, and now Dr. Beams has this whole thing sitting on her right now, doing something brand new. We haven't had a regionalization like this, I think, in a number of years. You probably know better than I do.
Yeah, we did the last one in South --
And the contract negotiations, it took us a year.
I don't want to be disrespectful, but I want to be respectful of everybody in the room.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. No one, really? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you kindly. You can probably hear me without it. Muriel Smith, 29 Leonard Avenue, Atlantic Highlands. I'm lost on a lot of stuff that you said, Mr. Gack, we already, because I know that this has been a long haul type thing. I, first of all, am having trouble understanding why the regionalization of the three schools was a difficult thing, simply because you're not dealing with any different people, you're not dealing with any different taxes, you're not dealing with any different children. So I didn't quite see the sense of a regionalization of the two towns and the three schools, because they've always been under one superintendent. It's, as long as I've been here, they've always worked together, and I didn't see whether there are any financial benefits, and I still haven't seen if there are any financial benefits of that. In view of the fact that it doesn't appear to me that if there are any financial benefits, that they can't be very much, because you're dealing with the same taxpayers, and no more taxpayers. And it's Oceanport and Shore Regional that have put up so much of an argument. The superintendent of these three schools, and now the superintendent of the regional school district, lives in one of the towns that's going to be adversely affected by the Seabright coming into here, or Seabright leaving those districts. Has anybody looked into whether there's any conflict of interest with her having such a powerful position? I've been to those board meetings, and I see how the attorney defers to her, or she speaks to the attorney during the meeting. Has anybody looked into any possibility of any conflict of having her being in such an advisory position?
So let me see if I can do justice to all the questions you posed. First, as far as combining the school districts is concerned and how complicated that might be. I certainly agree that the idea of combining three collective bargaining agreements into one is a challenge. It's done very rarely in the state. We've done it several times, and it can be done, but it is a challenge. I wasn't so much questioning the challenges that exist, particularly when you don't get help from the Department of Education. What I was saying is that since our experts were doing the work on the supplemental study, and we were going to be the ones submitting the petition, whatever challenges are posed by the petition to the Department of Education would be handled by Seabright and Highlands and their attorneys. So there would be no burden on the Board of Education, other than having their names on a petition. So I wasn't so much measuring how challenging the problems that they identified would be, I was simply saying that this would not add any weight to it and would provide, based upon what their own experts are telling them, the financial benefits that you referenced. As to your last point, in terms of any potential conflict of interest, I've heard this question raised many times. Given that we are now in litigation with the Boards of Education over the way in which they handled their last few meetings and let this issue come to a vote, we may obtain some discovery that sheds any light on that, although that's not really the point of the litigation. Honestly, there is no factual or legal reason, of which we are aware, that should get in the way of getting this issue submitted to the voters. So I don't need to say any more than that. It is my expectation that the Department of Education is going to agree with us. Remember, we're halfway there. The Department of Education has already agreed that Seabright has the standing to make this argument. And we have now made the argument, based upon the petition we submitted, where we can get a blessing for a vote to withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional, so long as there is a resolution passed by the Henry Hudson Regional Board that it's ready, willing, and able to take Seabright's children. So I'm not anticipating any challenges, and for a host of reasons, this has been more complicated than it needs to. If the Boards of Education would work with the towns, this will come before the public for a vote. I have no concern over anything Oceanport and Shore Regional have done or have threatened to do. So it's really, what is it, Pogo, the old cartoon, right? I have met the enemy and it is us, right? The only reason that this is where it is, is the Boards and the municipal governments are not working together as they once were. Shore Regional and Oceanport, by very design of the litigation, I'm sorry, of the legislation that was passed in January '22, are not in a position to stop this. That was the whole point, right? To make it easier to form regional school districts. So I'm hopeful that we will get there and get there in the next few months. This gentleman is re-elected, I want it to happen before his term is up, because there's no reason for this to take longer than a year.
And then, because I didn't really understand it, or I couldn't hear the whole thing, could you go over again tomorrow? Might a decision be made tomorrow, or did I hear you say it'll take a long time for that decision?
It will take a few months for the decision to come out. So I said, remember, I said we're halfway there, right? The Commissioner has ruled that Seabright has the standing to pursue a petition to withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional, and we have filed that petition. The Shore Regional and Oceanport Boards of Education have taken an appeal of that Commissioner decision, saying Seabright has that standing. That appeal will be argued tomorrow in Trenton. Oceanport and Shore Regional on one side, and Atlantic Highlands and Seabright represented by me. I'm sorry, just Seabright now, because Highlands is out. Atlantic Highlands is out. So it's just Seabright now. Seabright will be represented by me, and there'll be a Deputy Attorney General representing the Commissioner of Education on our side, defending the Commissioner's ruling that we have the standing to go forward. So there'll be four positions presented in court tomorrow. Shore Regional and Oceanport on one side, Seabright, because the other parties were dismissed on our motion, Seabright and the Attorney General on behalf of the Commissioner on the other side. So we'll argue tomorrow, take about an hour. Again, I expect it prevail. You don't get a ruling when you argue an appeal like that at the time. It will take a few months, but we haven't waited, because there's no stay, as I mentioned earlier. So we have filed our petition, and if our petition is granted, then we'll be looking to the Boards of Education to pass a resolution that it's ready, willing, and able to take the Seabright children, and we'll have a vote. So I am hopeful, I mean, I said it in a lighthearted way, but I wasn't joking, I am hopeful that there'll be a vote on Seabright joining Henry Hudson Regional in 2025. I'm aware of no factual or legal impediment to that.
I'll just add, because we know this issue has been out there for a while and has been holding up Henry Hudson's willingness to move forward with this process, we've requested that the appellate division expedite the appeal, so to move faster with both scheduling the argument, which is tomorrow, and making a decision. And the appellate division agreed with our arguments that this is a matter of public importance, and so they will issue a decision faster. Even though Vito says it will come in a couple of months, that is actually faster than any of the decisions that the appellate division typically renders. So this is, it is a lengthy process, but they have agreed with us, this is an important issue, and it needs to be decided as soon as they can. So we'll get that decision out as soon as we get it.
Thanks, Ken. Gina. Come on up. I'm wearing my motorcycle boots. All right, I'll just crouch over a little. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Melnick. I live at C5 Hillside Court in beautiful Highlands, New Jersey. I want to thank you for being here tonight, and also really for your ongoing I want to thank you for being here tonight, and also really for your ongoing information sessions on this matter. I think that the closest that the tri-district has come to something like this was their regionalization fair, which while eventually was shared online, had no public portion. Folks weren't able to interact with the Board and the experts, and get specific answers on the record that were shared publicly. So I appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate everybody who came tonight, and who, you know, maybe because it's a little difficult at 6:00 PM to attend meetings, I appreciate that you're recording this, and folks can check it out later. So before I make my comment, I don't think I have any questions. Well, here's my question, before I make my comment. Would it be true to say that the promise made by Henry Hudson and the Friends of Regionalization that the special election in September would be paid for by people who are not us, is that not true? They actually, the special election was not paid for, or is that something else?
No, you're correct. They believed that the nature of the grant they submitted would have entitled them to get reimbursed for the election by the Department of Education. The Department of Education has taken issue with that, and said the nature of the application you made does not entitle you to have the cost reimbursed.
I see.
That's the, I think the number is $18,740.
Okay, so what are the enticements to hold this election that had 20% voter turnout the day after a school holiday, maybe 30 days before a general election where people were voting for council members in town and stuff? Maybe it didn't get as much attention as it should have, and now that's compounded by the taxpayers are on the hook for $19,000? Okay, cool. Just wanted to clarify that before I leave my comments.
Is that a total number for all three towns? Just curious. That's the total cost of the election, yes.
Yeah, I mean, even if it's six grad, you know, that's like a theater program in the elementary school for the year, and, you know...
So it's just divided by the two towns?
Yeah.
Highlands and Atlantic Highlands.
Good point, yeah. And a soccer program. So I just, I think that what I heard tonight, when it comes to regionalization, is that, I think that the people of our community have sort of been part of either a bait and switch or a shell game. And at some point, like, this is a plea to people in Highlands, I think you guys, I'm preaching to the choir, we need to really start demanding accurate information, we need to start asking questions, why there are executive session meetings and we don't hear what they're about? Why are members of the Board publicly saying, we really want Seabright, but they just, you know, we gotta do all this stuff? Like, if Seabright and Highlands and Atlantic Highlands really want this to happen for our students first, and then, of course, our taxpayers, we would all be working together and saying, what the heck can we do to make this nonsense that we've been talking about since, for me, as a Board member, November of 2019? That still wilds me up. Why are we still having this argument? I do have a question. My question is, in light of the fact that, for whatever reason, the Boards took it upon themselves, simply because they hadn't heard anything, it's not there was action, I think we just heard, well, we just didn't hear back. So because they didn't hear back, they decided to do their own referendum, which now apparently we're paying $19,000 for. And the referendum, which again had 20% voter turnout, was about 400 people yes in Highlands and 200 people no. That then resulted in a funding formula where Highlands residents are responsible for paying more per student for the students who are attending the tri-district, which that number, by the way, is less than 800. So keep that in mind when you look at the percentage of your taxes that go to our schools. You might hear people in other districts say, well, my tax burden's 62%. That's probably for like 3,000 kids. So 42%, it's like 41.6. 42% of your taxes go to the three schools, which now the annual budget is $26 million, it's annually. You're not responsible for all of that, but you're responsible for a lot. So now that this new funding formula exists, because we have a new regionalized district where the people of Highlands are paying more per student, could you please discuss the importance of bringing in Seabright, so that maybe the people of Highlands will see a fair funding formula, not the one that was just passed by the interim boards, or Board? You're welcome to address that, you're right here. And how if we bring Seabright in, not only will it be better for us educationally, but we, as Highlands taxpayers, will see more equity and equality when it comes to how we fund the 60% of the students in the districts who don't live in our town, who go to the school districts who don't live in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want me to address the financial question?
Sure.
So the short answer to your question is that Seabright was going to be contributing about $1 million a year in tax relief for Highlands and Atlantic Highlands. I don't recall precisely how it would be divided between the two communities, but the allocation of that savings was deemed satisfactory by the mayor and council in both Highlands and Atlantic Highlands, satisfactory, again, to be considered by the voters. They didn't approve it, they approved it going to the voters. The reason Seabright is in a position to do that is because the grotesque funding formula that was visited upon them, Seabright did not agree to it, this is as a result of changes in the law, has Seabright paying about $2 million more than it would be paying if it was being taxed on a per pupil basis, the way regional school districts almost entirely were funded before a change in the law in the 70s. So because Seabright is getting battered so badly by the formula, Seabright is in a position to offer $1 million into a regional school district and still save $1 million itself. And when I say $1 million for the Highlands and Atlantic Highlands taxpayers, or $1 million for the Seabright taxpayers, I'm saying $1 million annually. So there is no doubt, there are discussions in rooms like this where citizens go crazy because you're going to spend $4,000 to repave the tennis courts, or these days, turn the tennis courts into pickleball courts. So when we're talking about $1 million a year in communities of this size, it's extraordinary, and available for the voters to consider if we could collaborate and get out of each other's way. So that is what we are hopeful we'll be doing in 2025.
Anyone else want to share? Just, we're going to get to everybody, if anyone else has anything that they would like to say, share, comment, question on. Okay, go ahead.
There's a question you said before that. The Board of Ed, the Department of Education is going to say that in order for students from Seabright to withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional, they have to have our Board of Education say, make a resolution saying we're willing and able to do it right now? But how can we do that when we don't have some of the information that we're required to have?
Let me underscore what I said. The petition that we have filed, because the Boards of Education wouldn't agree to file it with us, was to ask the Department of Education to agree to allow Seabright to withdraw from Oceanport and Shore Regional. Our expectation is that the Department of Education will grant that request, but that they won't allow the issue to come to a vote unless and until there's a resolution passed by the Board of Education, Henry Hudson Board of Education, that it's ready, willing, and able to take these children. If you have, if you have questions that you need to answer before the Board is going to make a decision on that, they should ask the questions. I suspect they could ask the questions now, so that they'll be available if the Department of Education rules in our favor. But we don't expect the Department of Education to say, your petition is granted, you can join Henry Hudson Regional, because Henry Hudson Regional hasn't committed to take the students yet. And so therefore, we can't imagine that they would allow the issue to come to a vote until the public knows what it's voting on, namely, what school is going to be taking these children.
Understood.
Okay.
But we assume, or I assume, I'm not saying we assume, I assume that the Department of Education would simply say that Seabright has a right to withdraw its students from those two schools. Once that is the case, then we're willing to move forward. But we can't move forward until we know that they have the permission to withdraw from those schools. Are we saying something different or the same?
We're saying the same thing. You can't do that until we get permission from the Department of Education because of the deal you cut with Oceanport and Shore Regional. You didn't have to cut that deal, but you did. So we're trying to work through that and allow the Boards of Education to have an opportunity to consider us, even though they cut that deal with Oceanport and Shore Regional. So the sequence you just articulated is exactly right. The sequence you articulated is exactly right. If we get that permission from the Department, we would talk to the Boards, the Henry Hudson Board of Education, and then hopefully submit the issue to the public for a vote. That's the sequence.
Okay. One other question, and it just slipped my line. It was an important one, too. I'll speak to you later, if I remember.
Well, we'll be here for a while, okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions or comments? Okay, well, seeing none, I'll close public portion. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to say, or address our residents?
I think it's good.
We're good?
Interesting.
Any closing arguments, sir? Ma'am?
Closing arguments? I get to ask to do those all the time? The, I just want to say thank you, really, the opportunity to address the public, given even those of you who follow this closely, how confusing it is because of all the different allegations and litigations, et cetera. But I meant what I said, it's actually a very straightforward process if folks work together. When, now, yeah, we've been involved in more of these than anyone. Well, we did this about 20 years ago in Lower Camden County Regional. That was a 7th through 12th school district, regional school district, that served students from seven towns. The communities that we represented, Berlin Township, Clementon, Pine Hill, Lindenwald, and Winslow Township. The mayors and councils and superintendents and Boards of Education of five towns worked together. When we had our committee meetings, the D-Regionalization Committee, the committee had like 50 people on it, it was extraordinary. But we got that done because people collaborated and did something that, at that time, had only been done once before in state history, in which most people said couldn't be done. And we went through the process of merging collective bargaining agreements, where K6 districts became either K8s or K12s. There were two junior highs and two high schools, and a third high school was built, all to make this happen over a period of four years. There were over 700 employees that had to be moved into a different collective bargaining agreement. Seven, over 700. There was one grievance. So there's a way to do it, there's a way to do it right, but it begins with collaboration and ends with making sure the public can be heard on such a crucial issue. So we certainly appreciate the opportunity to help you fight to bring this issue before the public. But if folks would work together and respect the public's right to be heard on this, it wouldn't be so much of a fight. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
One thing I would add, that, as you well know, we did work together until we couldn't, until there was pushback, but we did.
We did, and I certainly hope that we can put Humpty Dumpty back together again.
Sure.
Pieces are still there.
The pieces are still there, correct.
Okay, and then with that, I bid you goodnight. Thank you again.
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Uh, second.
On paper? Aye. Meeting adjourned at 7:07. Thank you, everyone.